Good evening, we'll call this board meeting of September 7th to order this Escandito School District. Do we have any public comments? All right. We'll go into closed session. Thank you. All right, good evening, we will reconvene for board meeting this evening on September 7th. I've asked Commissioner, sorry, wrong hat. Board Member Paulson to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Why is joining me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I consider it public for which it stands, what my nation, my God, indivisible, living in its majesty.
Thank you. Moving on to report of a closed session. In closed session, the board considered dismissal charges against a classified probationary employee and took action to approve those charges and release employee 628423 by about 4 to 0. In the matter of anticipated litigation, special education settlement case number 2022-23-02, the board voted 4 to 0 to approve the special education settlement agreement by a vote of 4 to 0. I didn't do roll calls, so we're going to go back up to item 3. In the absence of Board Member Gardner, I guess we'll just do a regular roll call vote. Commissioner Harper?
Here?
Board member. Doug.
President.
Mr. Houston.
President.
And Mark Olson's present, leading on that. Ms. Gardner.
Can I change my mons to present?
Present. So noted. All right. Item 5, approval of this evening's agenda. Enter the motion.
Move approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, please vote. Motion passes 4 to 0. Item C6, approval of the meeting minutes of previous meeting.
I approve.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please vote. Motion passes unanimously 4 to 0. Do we have any public comments, item E1? There are no public hearings. Item E3, CSCA. Good to see you this evening.
Good evening, President Olson, Superintendent Barra, members of the board, members of cabinet. I just want to say that school year went off without too much of a hitch. I want to congratulate all classified employees and certificated for job well done for the month or so that we've been involved in the education of our future. As far as our report for our chapter, we will be starting nominations for officers next month. And so I will probably not be part of the E-board anymore. I was not reappointed to my state appointment, so winding down. But anyhow, I wanted to say thanks, and you'll see me more at the board meetings and along with some other more familiar faces.
And Mr. Beebe, I think that we would like to just thank the entire classified staff, along with our teachers and administrators, but especially the classified staff members, for having the schools so ready to start the first day and for all the work that that entails, so please pass along our thanks.
I will do that, and also I just wanted to reach out and say the Williams inspections that I walked, we did very well in those five schools. And so I think the inspectors that do that as retirees are a little bit jealous of our district because they have to hunt and find what anything is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Beebe, for your years of service, we've enjoyed the relationship. Item E4, do we have a report from Triple EA, Ms. Krebs?
Good evening, President Olson, school board members, Dr. Barra and cabinet. I want to thank the classified staff because they were rock stars when it came down to getting classrooms prepared. We had a few issues with some classrooms in terms of air conditioning, and they were spot on. You guys are awesome. The classified staff is amazing, and we're going to miss Rick. He's super awesome. Also, it's been a little rough last couple of weeks. We're kind of starting to get our programs in place. The teachers are stressing out, but we're going to, the storm will calm, I'm sure. The TLCs are really excited about collaboration time, so that's looking awesome. That's something the teachers are really looking forward to. I do need to address a comment that was made at the last school board meeting regarding teachers not volunteering for summer school. I had a lot of members who reached out stating they were a little bit offended that it was appearing that teachers weren't going to give the opportunity to our students to volunteer during summer school. One of the things I need to point out is that every job that was posted for summer school was taken by teachers. So some of the members were a little bit offended because they felt like, you know, they work hard all year long, and to have to be away from their families during the summer to teach summer school is not something some teachers are willing to do. And I totally understand it because I am one of them. And a lot of that is because four weeks of my summer is spent without my boys. My boys are in a different district because of our schedule and the way that we come back to school in early August and leaving so early in June. My sons don't have the same schedule, so I miss four weeks of my time. The last thing I'm going to do is teach summer school. So I just need to give a shout out to my teachers who did teach summer school, and those who spent time with their families shouldn't be made to feel bad about it. But beyond that, I really appreciate all the hard work that everybody's doing. I think we're on a good path. We need to stay collaborative, and we need to make sure everything we do in this district is equitable and for children. Because our kids are everything. They're the reason we're here. So thank you so much, and have a good rest of your night.
Thank you so much. All right. I think all written communications, Kenny, have been distributed. Perfect. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Any requests to pull items for separate consideration? Hearing none or seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please vote. Vote passes 4 to 0. Thank you. Moving on to L1, educational services. Dr. Philia.
So as Dr. Philia is making her way up to the microphone, I just wanted to set the stage is we'll be presenting tonight some data sets, and really trying to do a very diagnostic dive into what is the data suggesting, what is the data telling us. Definitely we'll go through the CASP data, we'll also look at, try to get glimpses. There's some things that the CASP data will not capture, and it's almost like the tip of the iceberg. And what we want to do is do a deep dive and look at what's below that iceberg. What are we finding? And try to get to some whys, and then talk about the next steps. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Philia.
So, good evening. We will be presenting on our CASP data as well as our I-ready data, and also some of the intervention plans that we have in place for this school year. So we're going to go ahead and start off by discussing some chronic absenteeism. We wanted to just begin by sharing some information on this. We know that this is a significant factor that impacts our academic achievement for our students. And chronic absenteeism is a term used to describe any student that's absent for 10% or more of the school year. And so in a school year of 180 days, that means they would be absent 18 days to be classified as chronically absent. And that actually would come out to be about two days per month. And so here, what you can see is that while there was some improvement in comparing the two, last two years, this is still an area of focus. If we look back, pre-COVID, our chronic absenteeism rate was 12.5%. So the other point here to look at is that our students with disabilities have a higher rate of chronic absenteeism compared to the other groups. And SED is socio-economically disadvantaged. Here, we wanted to go ahead and take a closer look and broke the data down by grade level. And what we see is that it's our youngest students who have the highest rate of chronic absenteeism. So last year, when we discussed that topic, we actually tried to get some feedback from some of our parent groups, our D-LAG and our DAC, about that point of information. Some ideas or some thoughts around that would be that in, we know that in TK and K, that's not mandated for students to be attending. Perhaps just kind of the perception there, the priority placed on attendance. Additionally, really just with the littles, those attachment, sometimes challenges that families have. Additionally, knowing that our students do have the highest rate of chronic absenteeism, we also wanted to take a look at that information and break that down into the type of program that they would be participating in. And so here, what we see is that our separate class students are the students who have the highest rate. And again, often those are our most impacted students. And so some of the specific actions, as we continue to focus on this issue, include a district-wide focus on messaging and promoting of the importance of school attendance. And you'll see that in a lot of the communications that are sent out by Dr. Barra. And additionally, our integrated student supports team really takes the lead on that work by directly working with teams at the school sites. So as well as providing specific parent outreach and education. So there's a district pupil re-engagement team who supports school sites by providing specific data reports monthly, offering resources and consultation, and then also direct outreach to families. Each school site does have a pupil re-engagement team. And so that team consists of the family liaison, the clerk, the administrator, the social worker. And that team, again, looks at the data and determines what are the barriers that those students might be facing to try to be being in the parent education. One students this school year, as well as working with our special managers.
Is there, is it you know, more medically fragile because of COVID, or, I mean?
That's typically what we're seeing, is that those separate class students are the ones that are most impacted and oftentimes do have some health challenges that they're facing. And so parents might have some concerns around sending them to school at different times. They're concerned, or if they're sick, there's just more concern there by parents. And so attaching here just a goal, we talked about this a little bit last time with the ELOP presentation. Again, our focus is to be addressing chronic absenteeism, and we're looking to assess that as we go along the school year with the goal of a 10% decrease in that chronic absentee rate. So now, we'll go ahead and pivot and begin sharing information around the academic data from last year. We're going to be starting with some information regarding our LPAC assessment, and then move into CASP and I-ready. And I'm going to be inviting Kathleen Sorenson Up, our Director of Program Evaluation and Accountability, who will be walking us through some of that information.
Good evening, President Olson, board members, Dr. Superintendent Dr. Barra and cabinet. I'm going to start this evening with talking about the LPAC, or the English Language Proficiency Assessments for California. Our students took that assessment last year between March and the end of the school year. It's quite a wieldy assessment because the speaking part has to be given one-on-one. So over 5,000 tests were given, and that one section was one-on-one for all of those assessments. So this is just a little bit about our language learners in Escandito. You can see that about 37% of our population are English learners, or about 5,000 students. And of those 5,000 students, 457 are long-term English learners. A long-term English learner is defined as any student who's been in US schools six years or more. And we also have a number of students who are considered at risk of being a long-term English learner. Then we have about 1,309 students, or 9.3% of the population of the English learner population has been reclassified. And about 53% are English-only, or they were fluent on arrival. And the percentage of English learners has gone down slightly over the past few years. Just last year, we were at 38%, and this year, so far, we're at 37%. That could change a bit. Then here's a little information about the percentage of students at each LPAC level. The LPAC is a little bit like CASP, and the fact that a 1 is the lowest you can be at minimally developed, and a 4 is the highest you can be at well-developed. And you can see that the majority of our students are at the level 2 and 3, which is very much the same as you'd find in most districts in California because it's a little bit harder for students to move from 2 to 3 and 3 to 4 than it is to move to 1 to 2. Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about the English learner progress indicator, which is part of the California dashboard information. And I just need to explain a little bit about how this particular measure works. Essentially, the idea of this measure is to compare matched scores of students to determine if a student makes growth from one year to the next. So what they've done is they've taken the three LPAC levels, and since we know that level 2 and level 3 are particularly hard for students to master, they've broken up level 2 and level 3. They cut it off at the midpoint of the scale score range. So students, based on their scale score range, are assigned either a 2L or a 2H. And the idea is that they have to make progress between those six lower proficiency levels. And keeping that in mind, this is our historical information, all we have since we started the English Language Progress Indicator. And you can see that we started off at 44.6%. We actually went up a level on the dashboard and were at almost 46%. This year, I'm projecting that we're going to be at 50%. I'm saying that I'm projecting it because I calculated it based on the 2022 criteria because the state hasn't published the 2023 criteria. And one of the things that may be different about next year's criteria is in 2022, they did not include kindergartners because typically kindergartners wouldn't have matched scores. But now that we have more students in TK, we now have kindergartners that have matched scores. So this 50% that I'm projecting includes kindergartners. If I were to take kindergartners out, it would be 48.8.
Ms. Sorenson, can I just ask a clarifying question? So this is 44.6%, 45.9% of students that are making progress as measured on the LPAC? Got it, thank you.
And this next slide is, again, historical data, but it's breaking the percentage of students down. So the percent that you, or the number you see on top is the percentage of students that progressed at least one proficiency level. Then the orange underneath it are the students who are a level 4 that maintained a level 4. There were students who weren't reclassified, but they maintained that level 4. So the students that met are considered the students that are in that sort of teal color and the orange color. Then if you look at the dark navy color, those are the percentage of students that maintained at a level 1, 2, or 3. And then the lighter blue at the bottom is the percentage of students that digressed. They went down a level. And again, this projection includes kindergarten, but we're quite pleased with the results, the projected results because it looks like the students are making some progress. We have a lot fewer students who digressed and a higher percentage of students who met progress. And then we wanted to break it down by English proficiency level on the LPAC.
Sorry, so we'll go back to the last slide, I'm confused, I apologize. So that slide compared to the one before it, so if you're talking 2022 and you had 45.9 are making progress, because I'm just wondering how they compare, because if they progressed at least one, and that's 42.7, I'm not understanding how they correlate, I'm sorry. Plus the 3.2?
Yes.
But they maintain, but that's the maintained one, right?
But they're level 4, if you're a level 4 and you maintain, that's all, if you're not being reclassified, that's all you can do. So the state considers that maintains.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so this is the proficiency levels, and this is comparing 2022 to 2023 projected. And here you can see some fairly nice gains, especially at level 4, where we had 50% of the students, 57% of the students who maintained. So the hope is that a good number of those students will reclassify if they meet the academic criteria. But every level progressed. Then next, we have the breakdown by grade level. And something that's a little different about the LPAC in kindergarten is that it's weighted differently than it is in the other grade levels. The LPAC has two sections, an oral section, which has listening and speaking, and a written section that has reading and writing. In kindergarten, the oral section is weighted 75% of the test. And the rest of the grades, it's 50/50, 50 oral, 50 reading and writing. So there's two reasons why our kindergarten scores are so much higher than our first. One is those are our students who had the TK experience, so it's a smaller group, but they had that TK experience, which is super rich in language. So it's kind of exciting to see that data because it's looking like that experience is a good one for students in terms of language development. Then in first grade, you have the impact of the weighting of the test being a little different and reading and writing being so much more. So that's also a pattern that you would see everywhere, that in first grade, it would go down. Then you'll notice in third grade, it also goes down. That's because the LPAC comes in grade level spans, and there's a 3-5 grade level span, which is used for 3rd through 5th grade. So at 3rd grade, they're bumping up to a much harder test, and then the same thing happens again in 6th grade.
So are they, they're not taking the same test in 3rd grade as 5th grade?
They are. So there's different versions of the test, just like there used to be when we, well, just like there still are with the CASP. Definitely different versions, but it's the same assessment.
I, my clarification is, is the test the 3rd grader's taking at a 3rd grade appropriate level, and then the 5th grade test is more difficult? No, it's just the same test? Okay.
So it's a lot harder for a 3rd grader than it is for a 5th grader? I believe that it's the same test, I believe that when you calculate it out, the scale score ranges might be a little different? Okay, in terms of analysis, when we ran the growth data by school, we were super excited to see that at Quantum, while they have a very small group of ELs, they are a mighty group of ELs because they made 67.7%, or 67.7% of those students met their growth goal. And we think that one of the reasons is they have an I-Gro time where they're focused on individual conferences, goal setting, and they receive very specific instruction on their language needs. Then we had another school, FAR Elementary, which is one of our dual immersion schools, that also had pretty high gains at 58.2% of the students meeting the growth goal. And there, they really focused on some grade level analysis on what kinds of things that the LPAC tests, some of the structures and things that the students are tested on, and really targeted their instruction based on what they saw the student needs were. And just looking at the LPAC and how students did on the different parts of the LPAC, as you can imagine, they did much better on the listening and speaking than they did on the reading and writing. We see that, and also looking at the types of questions that are asked on the LPAC, we believe there's a continued need for focus on instruction on language production, having, teaching kids how to speak English, letting them practice orally before they actually read and write. And then, of course, a continued focus on foundational literacy in the case where the students are not already literate in their own language. If they're already literate in their own language, they tend to transfer the skills. Any questions about LPAC before I move on?
No, but I liked how you were, you know, show where, you know, where some of this growth might be coming from and how, you know, what factors led to that growth, which is really helpful. Thank you.
Okay, so with CASP, and again, this is embargoed data and it's preliminary data. Things could change a little bit because the, when it goes up to the state, sometimes they, they change which school district gets credit for certain kids. And some kids aren't disqualified, and we don't have all of that information yet, but this is our best guess, and it's usually pretty close. So this is comparing 2022 and the 2023 school years. And it's breaking it down by all students, and then you can see English-only. And then our English learners, our RFEAP, which is Reclassified Fluent English Proficient, our Socio-Economically Disadvantaged, SED, and SWD is Students with Disability. And this is our ELA results. And you can see that in ELA across those, the last two years, our results are fairly flat. Then if I move on to math, we were comparing the exact same groups. We can see that our Students with Disabilities group did make a little bit of growth. a little bit of growth. You can see that they decreased their their reds and increased their greens and their blues. So the green um is met and the blue is succeed. So both of those count as proficient. And now we're going to look at specific grade level data across three different years. So we're looking at two thousand and nineteen, which was our our last uh test before the pandemic. And then um last year and this year. And it is important to consider that after two thousand and nineteen, uh when the and after the pandemic hit that they did shorten the test. There's there's quite a few less questions on the test now, so it's not necessarily an exact um comparison between the two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty-two test. So here again, you see the the three years. And uh third grade um between two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three made a one point four percent increase. Then if we look at ELA results for middle school. This is six, seventh and eighth. Then if we pivot to math. Um, here you'll see this is third, fourth and fifth. And here you'll see that um second grade uh made a two percent increase. And then if we look at middle school, sixth grade made a three percent increase. And thinking about uh the analysis and um some of the things that that we've noticed and learned. Um, as the standards become more rigorous through the grades, student performance declines. And again, I think that that's um that is true in all school districts. Um, in our school district, we have a lot of English learners and a lot of students living in poverty. So our percentage of students in red is definitely higher than than some other districts. But the the trend of the the percent proficient declining as students advance through the grade levels is common. Um, we know that students who come to school um with language and literacy literacy skills are much more apt um to be um successful in school. There's a lot of research that shows that students with a higher vocabulary who know how to use language tend to do much better in school. And we know that we have um many, many students who come to school who are not proficient in English and in some cases are not uh proficient in their home language either if we were to um assess them. We have some students who are dealing with three languages. For instance, we have students who speak indigenous languages from Guatemala and they at home spoke those indigenous languages. If they went to school in Guatemala, they were exposed to Spanish and in the community. They almost only hear Spanish and then they're learning English at school, so they have the the three languages to deal with. Um, so when when they start off like this, we do need to provide um a lot of early intervention, a lot of uh language development. Um, and thinking about what we can do to support these kids as soon as possible so that they can feel success in school. And with that, I will give you your words after that.
Thank you. And so we wanted to also uh spend some time sharing information uh from our iReady data in order to really better understand how our students are progressing and to best inform uh our the next steps in our work. And so we wanted to start here um and point out that the CASP assessment uh that Kathleen just shared. That provides data from spring to spring. And so what we wanted to do is just to go ahead and share the iReady data also in that way, showing it here from spring to spring. And so what you can see really is that there is uh some alignment uh and similar trends between the iReady and CASP assessment when we're looking at the data viewed in that way from spring to spring. So for example, here you could see that our ELA uh CASP data for the all student group was thirty-four point four that were at or above standard and iReady is showing that they're twenty-seven percent at or above. For math, uh similarly, you can see here that again, spring to spring for math, we see those similar uh trends of alignment where they CASP uh for the all group, the CASP data showed twenty-seven and iReady is showing twenty-three percent at or above. So again, the general pattern of that data is showing that minimal change um when comparing spring to spring. But uh fortunately with iReady, we are able to go a little bit deeper and really kind of take a look at the information of how our students are doing within the course of a school year. And so here, what you what we're going to be showing, this is now uh fall to spring information. Where you're able to see some of the changes that happen over the year. So this slide is for reading and it is a summary for each of the subgroups. So again, you see a reduction in the orange and red, some increases in the green. Um, but that's again just showing the the progress or the change in the course of a year from fall to spring.
And and remember, when we're comparing year to year, you're comparing one set of students who were in kinder in in third grade the following year to a new set of students. So it's not you're not exactly tracking the students themselves. And so what we're showing now is same students. How did they progress throughout the year? So we can look deeper, like what is actually happening? And not just this diagnostic, okay, what happened last year and what happened this year? Because two different experiences in education, right? You know, so.
So on this slide, uh for the all student group, you see uh forty-one percent of the students in red and orange. That's two to three grade levels below, and then that was reduced to twenty-five percent. Yes.
Clarifying. Clarifying question. So we've got two different shades of green. Uh, I'm sorry, can you help me understand mid or above and early on?
So that's for the grade level. So early on would be if I'm a third grader, it's kind of early third grade is what you're scoring mid or above, mid or above third grade. If we're just talking third.
Okay, thank you.
For our EL students on this page, um we see again significant number of students being two to three grade levels behind. Sixty-three percent in the fall and then in the spring forty-seven percent. So here's the information for math. We see that pattern of decreasing the orange and the red increasing in the greens. Again, for that all student group for math, we see uh fourteen percent at or above, uh and then in the spring forty-two percent. So that's the greens. And so really the number themselves point to students who are multiple years behind. We know, of course, the the time and the intense work that it'll take to bring those students um to grade level. For our EL students on this uh page, we see in the fall fifty-six percent that were in orange and red. And then in the spring thirty-five percent. And not to ignore, of course, the students in the yellow there. So with still forty-six in the yellow, which is one grade level behind. So to go again a bit further, a little deeper into this, we wanted to break it apart even more. Looking at the data for fall, winter and spring. So this uh data is for reading for kinder first and second. And so it shows there kind of the progression in the over the course of the year for those students. So again, we we do see evidence of those positive trends. Increasing greens and declining reds that speak to to the work that is occurring in the classrooms. We see the kinder group there with seventy-five percent uh being at or above a grade level in the spring. And then also in second grade, we have a fifty percent holding at grade level. Um, but we see those foundational skill gaps there with the thirty-four percent one grade level behind. And then uh sixteen that are still two years behind for second grade.
I just had a clarification. So we're talking in these numbers, we're talking about the actual student, not a group within a class that may change halfway through.
Correct. These are the same.
These are the same students as we're moving forward.
Right.
Their progression on.
Correct.
Thank you.
So here on this slide is again the reading results for grades three through five. So three, four and five. And again, you see more, we we're now seeing more of the red and the striped red. We do still see that progress and movement, but of course, um there's high concern about the reds. But we're also seeing uh in those uh primary grades, really kind of the impact of the disruption in their schooling. Um, of those inconsistencies, just all of the challenges that we're aware of, where a lot of those foundational reading skills may not have um have really been um internalized for students. We see them struggling uh with that transition. Is there learning to read in those years that were impacted and now having to read to learn? So those challenges just continue to compound. In the middle school, we see um again, we we see the data and we see less rates of change in the middle school. Significant number of students, multiple grade levels below, missing key skills and really added on to the challenges of middle school, increasing lack of interest, attend attendance, engagement, motivation.
And you really see it noticeable in middle school and you realize, okay, the interruption that happened what's telling us the kids who are already three, very, you know, in the red, red. If we don't take care of those gaps, it just starts compounding and gets worse. And you see that in the trend. That it's the imperative of what what are those skills that those students are missing?
And so as we um shift to looking at math now.
I I had a quick.
Yes.
So we we know who these students are, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Knowing that we have this large group of students that are far behind, I mean, and we're trying to figure out how, what is our plan in the future to address these students that we know? I mean, it's not just the seventh grade, it's student A, B and C are here.
Correct.
What are we doing to address those specific students? So that we can get those gains. I'm not expecting them to go up three grades, but looking at the graph is um disturbing to me, only in the sense that there's more kids that are behind than that are at level or above. And now that we have a name that is associated with that student that is at that level. What is the plan moving forward to make sure that we give the student the opportunity to be successful? Because as we move forward, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, those are huge grades to be sitting in a class not knowing what the teacher's talking about and expecting them to um self motivate themselves to become successful.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, absolutely. What the with the iReady? You have a name behind every number. And you could drill down to the granular lever level of which standard, which skill, and we could identify those. It's now a matter of, okay, once we know and you know exactly, like there, there could be some phonics deficits in a lot of these students. Knowing that, it's like, okay, what part of the day during instruction do we need to differentiate? Do we need to keep the learning happening, but also go back and remediate and drill those? So it's strategic and not just let's help the kids learn to read. When we know, I mean, that's that's the power. And so working with the our teachers. So that's not all on the intervention teachers, but it's a partnership between the teacher and the intervention teacher and everyone on board is to to see, okay, I may have a group of kids who uh it's a sixth grader that needs some phonics instruction. So how are we going to address those needs within the classroom? Because if we don't address those, it's compounding and that's what the data is showing us. And now that we know what happens and it's got to be a teamwork. I mean, a lot of this, the kids, I mean, look at the sixth graders, what happened three years ago? What happened the in their fourth grade year? So we got a lot of holes, gaps to address. And it really is pulling everyone together. So it's not just, I'm sending you here for intervention, but it's truly a double dose and sometimes a triple dose of uh of doing that. So it's really taking all of us coming together, using utilizing this data to make uh targeted instruction. And that's and then we're going to go into what does that intervention plan look like strategically? So we've got that that coming up and.
So I so I jumped again a little.
But good, good question.
Yes, okay, okay.
It was good.
Because my my biggest, my biggest concern is is now that we have a name to these students. How how are we now going to address those deficits? And just by saying, oh, we're just going to do intervention. Well, that's
It's got to be targeted.
That's a great word. Unfortunately, it doesn't tell me what that means. And we said, how do you do? Is this conversation also being brought to the parent? As in, let's bring the family into this because your child is three grades below in math. How are we as a school district and you as a family going to bring this child up to a level where we can make sure or at least give this child an opportunity to be successful in life? Because being in in a deficit this badly is really, I mean, we're not, we're not helping them. I mean, I wish we could say that it's reversed, saying that, you know, we have very small percentage, but unfortunately, we've had a a lot of challenges over the years. And we need to, I think, jump in there, you know, full force, including the family and the community and say, what are we going to do to make sure that our kids are being educated to a level where they can be successful? So thank you.
Absolutely, that feeling of urgency, right, to act. Um, so we'll we'll discuss that a little bit more. Um, we did want to share uh we the math. This is now math uh data. This is for kinder through second grade. Um, again, showing fall, winter, spring. So again, we do see um the trends, um which is reflective of the work that is occurring in the classrooms uh with our staff and by our students as they're engaged uh in the work. And so that we do see those positive trends occurring. Of course, we do see less red in the younger gate and the younger grades here. Uh, but again, they're they're younger, so there's less of a gap there. This slide shows the information for grades uh three, four and five. And again, there we see, for example, third grade, uh their reduction of the students uh in red from forty-five to eighteen, increasing their the students in the green bands there from eight to forty-two. And here is the middle school uh data for um grade six, seven, eight. As you can see, again, that concern around the less of a change uh from fall to spring. Again, those uh compounding factors and that impact uh students in middle school. But this level of analysis um then occurs is and is occurring with our site principals as well, with teacher teams as well as they are uh coming together and meeting so that they, we can use this information to best inform uh those next steps. And so as the team has really been grappling with all of this data, um we really want to use the information to help guide our decisions. Um and I'm going to go ahead and invite up Kathleen again to share some key findings. Again, that support the direction that we're headed in, in order for the work that's that lies ahead.
I want to talk about the data in a way that we haven't looked at before. Um this summer, when I was looking at data, um I spent a a lot of time looking at different representations of the data. Just trying to to find trends and figure out what was going on. And as I was looking at one, one of the rep- representations I made. Um I I of course saw a lot of red students and it made me wonder who are these students and I wanted to know what their story was. Because we need to to know the kids and know their story to to know how best to help them. So I wanted to look at one of the features I already that's called the measures growth. They measure growth in two different ways. And one is called the typical growth measure, which which takes kids, it's for kids who are um performing usually at or above grade level. And uh the the system has an algorithm to look at where those students are and determine what the typical growth would be based on um with thousands of students who have taken the test before. It's able to calculate that the the student needs a certain percent of scale score growth to to continue to be proficient. Um then the other um growth model they have is called stretch growth. Stretch growth is the growth that students need to start making if they're below. So that is a a little bit more of a push. It's a little more of an ambitious goal than the typical goal was. And it's also based on an algorithm based on where the students are. So in what they acknowledge is is that students that are two or three years below grade level are going to have to meet stretch growth for several years in a row before they're going to become proficient. So one of the ways that they measure growth is the percentage of stretch growth that a student makes. So an example of this would be if the system said that a student should make a hundred point scale score growth. If they made fifty points, then they would have made fifty percent of their scale score growth. So I wanted to look at which groups were making great scale score growth because I wanted to learn more about the students who were successful. And then also, what can we learn from them and what can we learn about the students that um are struggling? So I took um the the ranges. When you take the file, you get like every single kid has a different percentage that they made. So I put them in bands of um either um a hundred percent or more growth because it's possible to make a hundred percent or more. There we have kids who have made two and three hundred percent growth. Um then I just divided into bands of uh twenty five, so seventy five to ninety nine, fifty one to seventy five, et cetera. So this chart is showing um where the kids landed in their growth, making growth based on their overall relative placement. So the first bar shows students who scored at mid or above, and this is reading. So the the big blue group is the group that made not just their typical growth, which is all we we really want from this group, but they made stretch growth. And then you'll see that the green was the group that made seventy five to ninety nine percent, et cetera. Then you go down to uh the the bottom group, which is very small for that group. And that's the group that didn't make any scale score growth or they digressed or lost growth. So then you can see the next one is our students who were scoring early on grade level. And then we go to um one grade level below and then two grade levels. And then finally, our three or more grade levels behind. And that's the the group that we can see really, really needs very targeted intervention. Then if we look at the same thing for math. Again, this is what you see, and this is for kinder through eighth grade. And of course, as you saw in the trends uh with the other data that you saw, the percentage of students that are at at those in those red levels is significantly less in the early grades than it is in the upper grades. So a few things that we learned in looking at the the data was, again, students who made the most stretch growth were in kindergarten through third grade. Students who made the least growth were in middle school. Um students who were performing um at or above grade level had the highest percentage of students meeting stretch growth. So those are are probably the students who came to school um very proficient in whatever their their language is and had been exposed to literacy. And it started off strong, they stayed strong. Um students uh who are performing two or more grade levels below had the lowest percentage of students meeting stretch growth. And some had no growth. Um the English learner student group had less growth, stretch growth than the all student group. Um when we think about our instruction, um I think we think about the fact that um our instruction appears to target uh the the middle students. Um and maybe doesn't meet the differentiated needs of the the students who are are working at lower levels. Um we all also can see that students aren't really able to sustain uh their growth um as they, as the test becomes uh more complex and they have to apply the skills. So in the lower grades, there's a little less application. Um for instance, in um lower grades, there's there's more comprehension questions where the students can find the answer directly in the text. Yet, as it progresses up to the higher grade levels and even a little bit in the lower grade levels, but you see it more in the upper grades is standards that are like um compare and contrast these two texts. So it's it's a lot, those questions are a lot more language rich and and require the kids to to generate and understand a lot more language. Um we've also seen that um the transition of uh learning to read versus reading to learn is hindered by language production gaps as indicated in the L P A C. Okay, that's the end of the data part before Dr. Filial goes on to the academic interventions.
Okay, um. So I'll be sharing uh some of the um specific plans then that we have in place for this school year. Um and now, um again, we we know that it will take time uh for uh to for our students to um be able to be at grade level. And but we do believe that we have set a lot of things in motion this school year um in order to be able to support our students and and see that academic success that we all want to see. With your direction and support, we have some key actions in place for this school year that really will drive towards uh seeing that academic progress for our students. And so um we have uh referred to this um this framework before, but this is the multi-tiered system of support. And this is a a research-based framework that really is intended to offer tiered supports to students depending on their needs. And the idea here is that tier one uh should really be addressed or should address the majority of the students uh with a strong tier one first instruction given by the teacher in their classroom. Additionally, tier two might also be uh provided to students in the classroom in a more small group setting. And tier three instruction there would be for students who would need that additional dose um there of intervention that's more intense, it's more targeted. And so when we talked about those students that are multi-grade levels behind, that's the tier three intervention. That is something that we uh would want to see happen for those students. So with the data that we have, um ensuring really that all aspects of these tiers, the implementation of this across uh all of our schools is going to be critical in addressing the needs of our students. And so the team has really uh worked on looking at the systems, identifying the gaps, identifying some of the uh shortcomings in the system as it was and trying to really address those moving forward. So identifying those gaps, those areas that need to be improved and really just continually designing structures and P D to support the work to address those gaps at the different tiers. And so this is the framework, the idea of what we're trying to implement, and we'll get into some of the some of the specifics. So we have also um talked about this idea of collaboration um and our focus on collaboration. And that is something that we really, we want to be seeing happen. We know that we are better together when the teams come together and share their knowledge and review uh data, set goals um together. Uh that's how they'll be able to most effectively plan for instruction that's going to address the needs of students. So having the time and the space for teams to come together to respond to those four key questions of a professional learning community is what do we want kids to learn? How will we know if they learned it? What do we do if they don't? And then what do we do if they did learn it? And so that's really another uh key component, this idea of um together collectively working on goals to be able to influence um student achievement. And so that piece, the between the implementation of M T S S, this idea of collective efficacy, these are research-based um factors that have a lot of, there's a lot written about that, about making sure that um if those things are implemented in an effective way, then student achievement would then follow. So we want to be seeing our teachers engaged in that collaboration. And the elementary enrichment wheel was something that was implemented this school year. Uh again, one of those key initiatives to be able to bring that concept to life with our teacher teams. The T L C, which is the teaching and learning cycle, that really just names a process um or a structure, but really the idea there is to ensure that you're hitting those four questions in a structured way, reviewing data, setting goals. Additionally, as far as those three pieces being um key factors in in um influencing student achievement, we also know that the key uh individuals to help support that work as research tells us are the teacher and the site principal. And so we really want to ensure that we are supporting both at both of those levels to ensure that this implementation is occurring as it should. So here, M T S S is really that overarching system that encompasses uh the needs of students and kind of this tiered approach of addressing social emotional learning uh behavior as well as academic achievement. The professional learning communities, uh that provides that culture of continuous improvement where they're asking those questions consistently. And then the T L C is just that process uh used to implement successful P L Cs. And so specifically for us, when we take a look at um the that and we recall that pyramid, the M T S S pyramid, we're looking at how to fortify our tier one uh instruction. And that's really going to be uh something that as the team comes together and plans their instruction, that they're going through those four questions, they're identifying those essential standards, they're looking at formative assessments. And then they're planning for how to respond to the needs of students. That's going to happen when they come together as a team to plan. We also have principals facilitating that process where they are there and they are helping support those teams to guide them through that and also to offer resources as they see they might need um as they're in their work and their planning. So of course, ongoing professional development, uh supporting the teachers as well as the principals in that work. So the hope there, the idea there is that that is um tier for the tier one component. For tier two, again, we're going to be seeing that through that collaboration process. When they answer that question, did students learn it? Um and what are they going to do if they didn't? That's that uh specific step where a teacher should be planning for small group instruction to differentiate to the needs of their students. In addition, universal access is another piece that we worked with our principals and with our school sites to ensure that that exists. And that idea is a block of time where they will be able to ensure that the teachers being able to provide the tier two small group instruction and then also tier three would be occurring when we have our interventionists uh pulling students in those um those most impacted students. So the elementary enrichment wheel actually um started last week and so uh we are in week two. And so while our students are engaging in those enrichment activities, we have our teacher teams that are collaborating in that important work with the support of principals and coaches, working together on the very complex planning involved in meeting the significant needs of students. And so as I mentioned, universal access is another component there. Um really, the goal is to ensure that that tier one core instruction isn't interrupted with pullouts or or other other people, students having to go out. But that there's kind of a a schedule in place to ensure that these things are protected, so that tier one is protected. Um and also, again, allowing for that dedicated time for in the schedule for tier two and three interventions to occur. And the those schedules should be including uh universal access for E L A time as well as for math. And then, as I mentioned, also those tier three interventions. That is uh uh going to be a very critical piece. We have um staff, again, with your um support and direction. We have uh added the intervention teachers that we had discussed. And so for math intervention, there is one uh one um intervention teacher at the elementary level and two for the middles. And so again, the idea there is that not just that we're saying about, that we're talking about intervention, but we really want it to be targeted. So they're reviewing this information, they're identifying the students. And also we are um working on a the ensuring that we're progress monitoring those students. So that those students come in and they uh target a specific skill, they're taught that skill. And then there's kind of this ongoing progress monitoring to um to ensure that those students are moving forward.
Because at every time we give the I ready assessment, we'll have a new set of data sets, right? You'll be able to, and then you'll be able to now formulate new groups. Hopefully remediate what the gaps is and then you go on to what those next. So the groups will remain flexible and continue to progress monitor and because we give this a set. And because we give this assessment in the fall, winter, and then spring.
So working with these staff members, these intervention teachers, we'll be ensuring, again, that progress monitoring is occurring. There's some specific entry and exit criterias that the team has established so that they will be able to continually be ensuring that students are receiving what they need. And again, some of that is for us to pivot as well and to really evaluate how, what is, what are the needs that maybe our teachers need so that we can support them in the work as well. And so we do want to attach a goal there for that work around those tier three interventions, addressing students who are multi-grade levels behind. We want to monitor that student progress, who are, who are receiving the interventions and want to, again, see them reach that stretch growth goal. And so as you see there, we'll be again, looking deeply at those I-ready assessments. And then we have some specific goals there around what we want to see happen. Students participating in tier three interventions and the goals there for them to reach their stretch growth goals.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah. Mr. Houston.
Thank you. Thank you. Great information. Obviously, we would hope that it would be looking much better, but like I said, we've had many challenges over the years that I think has very evidently been shown here has hurt our students. And the fact that we are bringing forth all of the information is extremely important because what it shows is transparency for this district. And that's something that I think is very important. We want our parents, we want our students to understand that we care about their education. We want them to succeed, and successes for each person will be different. But we want to have that basic hopeful success for all these, for all these students. The stretch progress, I really was impressed with that. Thank you so much. That's something that I think is, is something that we really need to continue to monitor. Now, going back to the middle schools, there is obviously no way of bringing the students that are three or more grade levels up to level within that timeframe. We, I mean, that it, to do that would be extremely difficult to do because of the short amount of time that we have. Where, me personally, I do not expect miracles. But we have to expect improvement. And something that I would like to see in the future when we're doing, when you're providing us with this information is when you provide us with a percentage, for instance, sixth is twenty-three percent, seventh is thirty-nine percent, and eighth is forty-one percent behind three grades or below. What does that equate student-wise? How many students are that, that are at that? So that we can look at an actual, instead of just a percentage, we know exactly how many students do we need to now focus on? Additionally, what is the time that our district is looking at to dedicate per student to assist them to increase those levels? Have we come up with some type of plan in that respect? Because if you have a child that is three grades behind in math, is going to need more time dedicated to that student than someone that is one grade or at. And one of the biggest things that I think we really need to recognize is the sheer amount of work that is in front of us. And to thank the teachers, staff, everyone for realizing and seeing this and making up a plan for it, because it's monumental, the task ahead of us. And it's not a failure, I don't believe it's a failure on the teacher's side, the administration's side. I think it's a, it's a failure on society and what's been hit or thrown upon us that has hurt our children. Now that we see this, we need to step forward and make a definitive plan. Make sure that we are going to give our students the best opportunity to be successful. And well, the last question that I had, and I don't know if this is something that is a necessary step forward, but these students that we can now identify that are three or more grades behind, are they on an IEP? And I, and I don't mean that as a negative thing. But what that does is that now brings the family into this with a meaning that says, your child is three grades below. How are we, as a school district and you as a family, how are we going to support this student to be successful? What do you need from us so that we can make sure your student is successful? Because it's, it's, I mean, it, it just, it really, it really just, just throws me into the backseat when I start thinking about these students that are sitting in a classroom, being instructed, and they have no idea what's being said. I mean, I just, I mean, I remember being behind a semester or so in math and having to work hard to get back when I was in high school. But to be three grades behind when they're talking about X equals this, and they're, they don't even know what one half divided by a third is. To me, it, the fact that we now can recognize it, it's now our duty to step forward and make sure that we provide whatever is necessary, hours, materials, whatever it takes to make sure that these children and these students are successful, or at least bring them up to a level to where, you know, they will succeed. So that's all I had. Thank you.
And I can respond to the, the question about, you know, are these students on IEP? Well, first of all, we, there has to be a disability that the students, in order for them to qualify. And unfortunately, I mean, this, here's the reality. This is our new normal. Like this is the result of what we experienced the last three years. This is what we have, and I think you're right. It's a call to action. We all have a responsibility to help these students. So it's whether a student, you know, when we're, when we're asking for an IEP, what we're really asking is we need additional resources. We need additional time with the students. We, you're right, we need to bring the parents in, and believe me, with these results, we also have a parent communication component that the parents get these in parent-friendly language. Definitely, when this parent, when they have parent-teacher conferences, the teachers go over these results, where the student is exactly in relation to the, the grade level standards. So there are tools that we have that we, the teachers are going to utilize and have been utilizing so that we bring in the parents in. But you're right, we have to get everyone involved in this because it just cannot be on, it, it's got to be all of our burden. That here it is. You're right about our middle school students. We've got a few years, and then they're going to go on to high school. Believe me, the high school is also dealing with this. You're hearing about, I was reading an article the other day about our students who are entering college, the ones that started college. We're hearing articles about the job force and the job market, how students are having a hard time with entry level job performances that, you know, a percentage of students used to pass this initially, and now it's a lot less. So this is a countrywide global issue that we have to and will be dealing with for quite some time. So that's why we needed to take this time to look at what's below the tip of the iceberg, because there's a lot going on there, especially for a student who's an English learner, student who's new to the country, already had some deficits and learned their language, and they're here. That's going to take a little bit longer. They've got to master the language, and then they've got to master it. So we've got to do it all, and we've got to do it with a sense of urgency, and
And when I, when I, when I talked about the IEP, in, in my mind, it doesn't have to be called an IEP. It just, I mean, just, yeah, just some, some type of, some type of trigger.
Yes, getting the students, getting the students to be, to know where they are, and you, you're seeing that. Teachers are setting goals with students, and the students are taking ownership. They understand what these levels mean. What does red mean? What does orange mean? So that they know what they need to do to get to that next level. Goal-setting with kids, and that way they're a part of their own education. You're absolutely right.
And, and like I said before, I mean, this is a monument, monument. Thank you. Ask in for, in front of us. And this is not something that's going to change overnight for one year. But, but like I said, the fact that we are being transparent, the fact that we're showing everyone everything that we have here
Correct.
is, is extremely important because that's how you move forward. It's when you only show the positives and you kind of downplay the negatives
Right.
that, that, then, then you kind of look at, well, why are we not at here? And then, then, then the discussion has to start over again.
Correct.
But thank you so much for the work that you guys are doing and continue with doing that. Because it's very educational for me. Thank you.
It's Harper. Mr. Paulson?
All right. So I would like to echo the idea. Thank goodness that we are making this clear and we're being open about the challenges that we face. I am disappointed that we did not see significant growth in our CASP scores. They, you know, some up, some down, but pretty well flat. On the other hand, we didn't, we didn't see a decline. That's good. But also, we're able to tonight, and I know you, that you all have been doing this. We've been able to correlate those CASP scores to this I-ready data, and there does appear to be a pretty strong correlation there, there, you know. So we've got some additional data to confirm where our students are at. That's a positive thing. I think it is positive that we have a plan, a solid plan, I believe, to address some of these gaps. Some of them have been exacerbated by the COVID pandemic and the shutdowns and everything that entailed. But it's really nice to see the 2019 pre-COVID data and to remember, historically, this is our data. Yeah, it's gone down a little bit. But this is where we're at. And that has, as Mr. Houston points out, that is, that points to our situation in Escondido, in California. It's a societal thing that can, you know, I, I think putting faces behind the data. What percentage, as you ask, of our students are coming from a situation where they're entering our schools, never having been in a school setting? Or maybe having been in a school setting where they attend two or three days a week for only a certain number of days during the year? How many of our students are coming in and are learning how to sit in a classroom, in a desk, and are learning to write when they're at the middle school level? And they're taking the CASP test, and their scores are showing up with us? How many of our students are in economic situations where they need parent support, they need language support from their parents, from their families? But their parents are working because we live in Southern California and our parents work. So I think putting the face behind the data and really saying, okay, where are our students at? Not using it as an excuse, but here's why and what can we do to, to help them still grow? So, you know, we've already done part of that through our early childhood education programs. Through our TK program, we're giving students more, we're giving the community more to try to mitigate some of those societal situations. Is it enough? I don't know. Can we do more parent education? Maybe. I, I don't know. Can we get our parents to come in for meetings early on so that not talking in IEP and we're not talking about qualifying more kids for special ed? Because that is not the answer. The answer is good first instruction, good first instruction. And I'm glad to see that we're prioritizing that good first instruction because that is your number one intervention or and so I, I very much appreciate the data. I do want to say we've been looking at data and over the, over the past years that I've been here, it hasn't moved that much. I mean, we were making some upward progress. But what I'm really proud about being in this district is we are not saying, oh, it's good enough. We're not blaming the students, we're not blaming the families. We're saying, as a society, as a community, we've got an issue, or we want our kids to do better. I think right now, we've got a plan to get to improve it. And after this year and over the next several years, we're going to have to evaluate, is our plan working? Are we seeing an upward shift in learning outcomes? If we're not, we're going to need to adjust it. But I think also with our intervention program, our math intervention program especially, our wheel program, our TLC program, we've got to show some patience. It's not all going to happen this year. Those programs, I mean, we have really put out and we have put forward an aggressive program, I believe. And we're not going to see results right away. We've got to figure this out, and we, it's not going to be figured out in the first month of school. We got to try, obviously. But I, I'm just encouraging everybody to understand, there's going to be bumps here. There's going to be bumps in the road. There's things that need to be clarified just, you know, when we're talking about kids who are multiple grade levels below. Well, a lot of the same kids who are two or three grade levels below in math are also two or three grade levels below in English. So which one are we going to prioritize? Because we can't have the kid with two different intervention teachers talking at, you know, intervening at the same time. So I, there's just a lot of this stuff that we still have to work out. And I know that the intervention teachers, I've talked with two exactly. And they're, they've shown me how they're working together to prioritize what block of time they're working with each kid to, you know, to give them the most urgent intervention. And so I compliment everybody for their work. I thank all the teachers for their extremely hard work. All, everybody involved in this. But just echoing what Mr. Houston says, it's not good enough. It's not good enough. And I think everybody in our district agrees. It's not good enough, and we've got to make this better for all of our students and what, whatever that is going to involve. I think we've got a good plan now. And if there's anything that we're missing, we need to identify it and make sure, you know, that we, that we increase, that we increase this. And understanding it's not, there's only so much we can do in the six and a half hours of school. And I don't think we can put kids into more reading and more math in the after-school programs and believe they're going to make significant progress in math and English. So I, I'm just saying, we need to show some patience, let our program work, and, you know, make adjustments along the way and trust that it's going to lead, you know, because this is very research-based. Trust that it's going to lead to improvement. But understand it's going to take some time. But it understand it's going to take some time. So, thank you.
Very well said. I agree with both of you, um, of your points because that's, that's what I'm trying to find is my patience. Because we have put a lot of things in place this year, but I feel like we've seen this every year. Like we, we come out with the results and we need to do better and so we put a new plan in place. And by the end of the year, we're not following the plan and that is what I'm really concerned about. I'm really concerned about our intervention teachers not being able to do interventions, being pulled for subbing for different things like that. I'm for concern that our principals are going to go get overwhelmed with behaviors and not be able to attend these, these, you know, our, the wheel meetings and really make the impact that we've been training them all year to make. So I I'm really concerned about the details. I think we have a great plan in place. We've given more time to the teachers, we've given the, you know, more training, more PD, which we could always use more of. But and we need a few more bodies, but I want to make sure we are protecting that time. We are protecting, like you said, Dr. Barrow, the, you know, the core instruction time, that we're not pulling kids out during that time. But that they are getting, you know, pulled out of non-important, not, not important, but less in core times. So they do get that intervention, so we can bring it up because it's obviously the, this is not happening. It's not, the differentiation is not happening to the point where it's making the impact and that's what we really need to see. Um, and that's my greatest concern is we have this plan in place and let's not mess it up and, you know, lose sight of what the goal is. And because of, you know, situations on campuses or situations with students that we change the plan. We need to figure out how to stick to this plan and make sure it's working. Because if it doesn't, if if we can't stick to the plan, there's no point in having it and putting all the effort into it. We might as well just hire some babysitters. You know, I don't want to, that's, it's what it comes down to. And again, I, you're right, you're, they're coming out of seventh and eighth grade and they're still, you know, we're going to send them to the high school and that's not going to help them with their math or their English, you know, so that I feel a huge, sorry Doug. But I feel a huge responsibility to these students that, you know, just, that's always was my thing. When I first stayed up, came on the board, our English learners were at zero, eighth grade was at zero percent proficient in math. And that just has always doubted me. You can't tell me that one student that is an English learner could be proficient in math in our district, we're doing something wrong. And that has always been a driving force for me to change. I'm, I'm trying to be patient with this plan. I'm excited about this plan. I'm giving you full support. You said you want the year. I got, I'm giving you the year. I just, I want to see it happen and I'm, and I want to see us stick to it.
Just want to point out, I was not objecting to your statement about them, about the high school district, not.
Just right with you.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Thank you for the presentations. A lot of data, a lot of information. Uh, I echo what my colleagues say, um, as well as just some of these, just to continue to say, some of these conversations are going to be difficult that we need to have with the parents. And if we have an opportunity, whatever it is, I don't know the details, what we can, what we can't do to get a student in the right spot, regardless of what the social components are. That ensures that student has the best chance of success, both in our district and moving forward. And I know that's a difficult conversation. I've set it up here before. Uh, but finding creative ways to have those conversations to get them to the right level, it's only going to help our district. And most importantly, it's going to help the families and the students themselves. So, thank you for that. It's been a long item, so we'll move forward to, uh, item M one. Superintendent's Office Appointment of Commissioner to Personnel Commission.
That was a long presentation and I don't want to miss anything. I certainly don't want to miss Andy's unad audited actuals presentation. Can we take two minutes?
We may take a two minute break.
Presentation, proceed. And this one is directed to Dr. Philia. Dr. Philia, I am always interested, are ELA results consistently come back better than our math results? Um, and that is especially notable in the middle school years. So my, my simple question, it's just an informational one. Um, is do, is there some difference in the amount of time allotted to math instruction versus ELA instruction in the middle school years that is different?
Yes, so, uh, for ELA, they have two periods for ELA in middle school and one period for math. Okay, so there's, there's difference.
Is that a historical thing or is that a state mandate? Well, how did that come about, I guess?
Um, I don't know the history of how it came about, but it has been, uh, in place for several years.
Okay, I, I think that may, I, I'm just wondering.
And perhaps Kathleen might offer some historical.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I don't think it's been around longer than I've been teaching. I think this came around as part of No Child Left Behind where all emphasis, uh, so very early two thousands, all emphasis went to ELA. Um, and so they started doing the double blocks, um, high school level and middle school level. And I think in the elementary levels, um, where it was like, oh, we're going to spend more time on literacy, which seems to me like it really makes sense at those lower elementary levels when you're learning to read before reading to learn. Um, but I, I, I would just like to throw out that I'm wondering if that may be some of a causative, uh, portion of this real discrepancy we see between math skills and ELA skills. And I'm, you know, of course, we don't want to, we don't want it to downgrade our ELA results. But I'm, I, so I'm just bringing that one up. Because that may be a reason we're seeing such a difference between math and ELA. So thank you for that clarification.
And I would just add also that, um, this school year though is part of the plan um, for middle school are students who are, uh, multi-grade levels behind. Those students that are identified will receive an additional period though of math intervention. So that is something that's going to be in place this school year for those identified students. That's not necessarily for all students, but for those students identified.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Item M one. Dr. Avara.
Yes, um, I'm bringing, we're bringing this item to your attention that, um, our personnel, we're going to have an opening again and our personnel, on our personnel commission, this is the board's appointee. The district's appointee that we get to choose. And so at the last time, we had this, this item come up, uh, there was interest in the board to have a process identified. Um, as part of, you know, how do we, how does that person get selected? So I would like to propose that perhaps the board, if they're interested in looking at the process, we form a subcommittee of two board members, that would, we could send an application out and the subcommittee could actually review the applications and then bring a recommendation to the board.
Dr. Paulson or Mr. Paulson?
That would be great. Yeah, and I appreciate Dr. Barra bringing this. I was, you know, going ahead some questions. I just felt that this might be a more in informative and open process. So I appreciate that. I would be in full support of that, uh, that process. It sounds like, uh, my colleagues.
We actually have, uh, two board members volunteer to work with me. Okay, I see Mrs. Harper.
Not Doug.
And Doug. So we'll, we'll start working on a timeline process and we'll give you more information in the Friday update and then we'll all work with the two, the subcommittee.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. So if anyone's listening out there, we will be looking for, uh, recommendations. The person, the people, the people cannot be an employee of the district, but they must live within the district as well. So we'll put more information out, um, to the, the community at large.
All right, moving on, uh, Mr. McGuire, item N one.
I apologize in ahead of time, this is going to be a long one. So, uh, as we've talked about, uh, back when we adopted our budget and our forty five day revision that we were in the process beginning on July first of closing our books, uh, for the twenty two, twenty three year. Uh, so during that process, we kind of, uh, move money around and and make sure we use up all of the resources for the year that we have, uh, do some of the cleanup. Um, reevaluate what our revenues were, uh, new information comes in also, uh, from the time we adopted our budget, which is also based on our, uh, estimated actuals for last year. And that's through the month of April and so some things still, uh, can shift in May and through the month of June. And so what I'm going to show you tonight is, uh, first is going to be a comparison of where we were when, uh, in April. When we adopted our budget, this was our estimated actuals for that year. So where we thought we were going to end based on, uh, through April. And then after we finished closing the books, which is a, you know, quite a long process. Um, I would say pretty tedious since a lot of work in our fiscal department. Um, but they're done. And so these are the results of the unaudited actuals. And so they're called that, the name implies that they have not been audited. That will be something we'll talk about a little bit later in this presentation. Uh, but this is the result of all of our work in closing the books. So the differences there are, are here, do the math for you. But I think most importantly is the why, uh, what's driving some of those changes. So let's type right in. So the first one here, our revenue, uh, here it shows our combined revenue is increased by nine point two million. Uh, so I'll kind of walk you through this bullet point list there that's popped up. The first thing there, the fair market value, this is probably my favorite item on here because I'm going to struggle the most explaining it. As it comes to, uh, our accounting practices and and what we're expected to use as far as our accounting methods as a public agency. Uh, we're required to book as a revenue, uh, at this time only of the year during unaudited actuals. The fair market value of the money we have in our treasury. Now, that is an accounting mechanism. It's like you own stock today and it goes up in price, you know, today. Um, tomorrow it may go down, like you never really had that money. It's just what the value of it was, the fair market value. And so we have to book that revenue, uh, as a revenue. Uh, and that, uh, actually happens on, as effective June thirtieth. And then on June, effective July first, transaction happens a little later, but effective July first, it's reversed. So it never really exists and it's not tangible money. It's not something that we can spend, but we have to show it as a revenue. So that's why, um, it's in here and it, and it's a little bigger this year, um, because of the higher level of interest and whatnot. And so it's driving that number up to some degree. Also included in this is the interest earned. Now in April, we thought we had about five hundred thousand dollars in interest earned on our, on our holdings in the treasury. And then the, and the, and the treasury gives us that interest information quite late. And so this actually goes even past, probably back to February, um, when we got an update through June. And so now it ended up being about one point, uh, nine million for the, for the whole year. Um, then the Arts and, uh, Music Grant and the Learning, the LERP, the Learning Emergency Recovery Plan money. Uh, remember we talked about that forty five day revision that, uh, when we adopted our budget, that the May revision had that cut? And then a lot of that was restored, uh, those, that, those dollars are now included in that revenue, uh, that you see there as well. And then, um, this was an interesting one as well as the decrease of S R three, uh, capital projects. So we had a lot of projects underway, uh, some of them didn't get started on time, uh, or just were delayed for whatever reason. Some of them started but aren't finished until after July first. And so we expected to have spent more money in S R three. So this affects our revenue in that this is one of those things where, uh, we have to have a matching revenue and expense in the year. So because we didn't finish those projects and spend that money in twenty two, twenty three, we have to decrease the revenue by that project cost. And you'll see that play out again here in the expenses side. Likewise, uh, the rest of our federal funds, uh, that we learned a little bit more about earlier today. Um, anything unspent, we also have to, uh, reduce our revenue and our expense equal. And that would be in the previous year, so not the current year. That money then just becomes part of our beginning balance going into the year we're in now. So here's the expenses, as I was talking about. Now, this is a, this is a calculation of comparing one thing to, uh, what happened in April to what happened when we closed the book. So it's a, it's a negative, so it means the expenses have gone down. And in this case, uh, that's also the matching expense drop because of the S R three revenue drop and also the other federal funds. As well as at that time in April, we expected to spend a little bit more money in our ELO program than we ended up spending. Uh, and all of that contributed to that drop in expenses. Here's one and it's kind of a more of a break even on the combined side where, uh, but I wanted to point it out because some of the, the good work that, um, uh, our friend, our new friend, old friend, new job, Patrick and old friend, new job, Michelle have worked tirelessly as we were closing the books and identifying all the available resources that we could use to, uh, to, uh, spend as far as our booking our expenses into to cover our special education program, which resulted in us being able to reduce our, the general fund contribution to our special ed program. So that transfer from unrestricted to restricted was able to be, uh, reduced because of the work that they did in the process of closing the book. So thank you both of you. Okay, so those are the changes and what's driven them. Is there any questions at this point? Okay. So now I want to show you, uh, kind of where we stand and I like to always show, you know, in every budget presentation, kind of where we are right now. So one thing I wanted to remind you is about that fair market value, that which really isn't a tangible thing. It's already been removed from our revenue. Um, if you were to compare the unaudited actuals to what I'm showing you here, the beginning balance, it's been reduced by two point six million and that's the value of that fair market value. So I took it off of here and this so that we can see this is the money we actually have right now. It's kind of like our, if you pulled up your, your bank account online, this is what you'd see. Uh, and so that beginning balance has been adjusted downward to remove that fair market value that we never really had. But let's see how that plays out. Uh, also, some of the other changes that we discussed are included in, in now in this. So this is different than the adopted budget. It's adjusted to what the unaudited actuals have information from that. Um, also, as you walk down and we have a revenues, expenses, the transfers, uh, which a lot of that's the special ed investment that we make. Um, and then you have the net change and so right there, there's a deficit showing there, the ending fund balance. So after all of that, what we end up with at the end of the year, uh, and this is how we expect in the year at this point. Uh, then we have our four percent reserve that, uh, by state law, we have to keep a reserve three percent. The board's elected to keep that at four, uh, a prudent move. Uh, and then the commitments and the commitments is made up, there's sixteen million of that is the Mackenzie Scott donation. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later on today and again in the future. So it's a little teaser and then the rest of it, just different, uh, assigned reserves, so those other places that we, um, savings accounts for other things like declining enrollment, we have some money to mitigate against that. Uh, and other things that in our Indian balance there. And all the details of this are in the, on the, on the, uh, website in our agenda, uh, as well as in, it's the budget book, we call it. And that's attached in there in our agenda. Okay, so then going into next year, we're projecting forward how we would, uh, after ending this year, if it all ends like this, this is how we would begin next year. Uh, and you can see that, that combined ending balance there is still of eighty four million is still far greater than the, uh, reserve requirement. So we would be, um, measured as fiscally solvent, um, in this year. But then most importantly, this is the year that the county, the state ourselves, uh, would determine our fiscal solvency fully. And, uh, the seventy four million there, the combined union balance far greater than our reserve. That, uh, we would get a positive certification, meaning the, the state and county would declare us as fiscally solvent. Now that commitment still has that sixteen million in it throughout all of these years. And that's because at this point in time where I stand now, no action has been taken by the board and it will require board action to do anything with that sixteen million. So that's why it shows up in all three years on this. But before we get into that, there's one other item on here. In fact, there's two items I'm presenting about right now. One, the unaudited actions, asking you to approve the work that we were showing you tonight of closing the books and where are we landing? But then also, uh, we're asking the board to do, uh, approve an update to our S R three plan. We're going into the final year of that. It expires in September of twenty four. But essentially our plan is to spend that money down in the current year that we're in now. And so it's a good time for us to go back. We haven't updated it since, we haven't asked the board, uh, to readopt it or since the original plan was adopted in October of twenty twenty one. And so it's a good time for us to enter this final year and readopt a plan that now includes all of the different things that we've done with it that has been shown through a variety of presentations and, uh, conversations here, uh, over the last couple of years. And so written on the, in the, we have, we broke it down by categories. Uh attached to the agenda and you have before you now too is kind of the more detailed narratives of all of those items. Um and so you can see when we originally adopted the plan, for instance, we had uh left behind about four million dollars. Which was, when we have any plan, we always want to leave behind a little bit just in case to make changes and adjustments. Uh and so now we've, we've uh moved that up across a few of the different lines, capital projects, staffing, training. All of that uh still our original amount we were allocated was thirty six million and, and still maintaining that amount. And now it's fully allocated across all of those and um we expect to have spent that all down by the end of the year. Are there any questions on the S R three plan, given that it's its own board item at this point? Is there any questions about that? All right, Percy. So next steps. So when it comes to the Mackenzie Scott donation, which I actually, no one asked, so I'm gonna tell you. So far, we received it in October of twenty twenty two and through the end of June, we've uh had uh earned about two hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars in interest on just that money alone. Okay, so at the one point nine million, two, two hundred and ninety, about three hundred thousand of that is made up from the Mackenzie Scott donation. Interestingly enough, uh last year, the twenty one, twenty two years, the year before last, um our interest revenue is in the two hundred thousands. Interest rates have gone up significantly. Also, that learning emergency recovery plan money, that twenty million dollars plus the Mackenzie Scott sat in the bank the entire year, or at least started in October for Mackenzie Scott, the whole year for the other one. Uh and just having that money sit there earning interest also help us to accumulate a higher uh interest deal uh that's been deposited into our account already. But next meeting, uh we are bringing forth our financial advisor. We've done a lot of work in, in uh measuring different uh options for investment. And they're gonna come stand before you with myself and we're gonna present to you an option for investment uh of our Mackenzie Scott funds. And so just a teaser for that, if you're interested in that uh donation and what we're doing with it, tune in on September twenty first when uh we do a full presentation, lots of numbers and charts. And I think it's a really positive outlook and so gives us some, some good strength for some of the big things that we want to do next. Uh as I've talked about it, forty five day revision, the October, uh that's when our California taxes are due, corporate personnel of that. Um and so once we get, they announce what those actual revenues are, then we'll know whether or not there's gonna be any adjustments the state will make in the current year. Uh so that's just something we're gonna keep our eye on. Uh and then uh in our, just next time we're gonna come before you to actually, tonight, we're not asking you to like re-adopt the budget. It's just to approve the, what we are showing you for the closing of the books. But in December, we're gonna come back and, and have a budget revision or re-adopting our budget with the newest information. It's our first interim. Uh included in that, we'll have updated ADA projections for the current year and going forward. As we'll have more of the year uh already have occurred. Uh our M Y P at that point then will now be adjusted based on all the current information of, you know, any new increases in expenses. Any revenues that might have come, you know, keep our fingers crossed, new revenues could show up like last October, someone called and gave us sixteen million. Who knows what shows up next? Uh then, of course, uh any staffing changes, whatever, all we reflected are M Y P. And then any impacts from the state budget, the, the the tax revenues will have on our budget will include in that. And then uh the unaudited actuals, the process after tonight, once that's, if, if in fact that is approved tonight. Uh that would then go into the audit process. And back in, in coming before the end of January, our auditors will stand before you and present the audit report to you and that would finally close out the twenty two, twenty three fiscal year.
Any specific questions?
Yeah, a couple. So how much is like in our account at any given time? Like, so you're saying we usually only get about two hundred thousand in interest each year?
And that's because the interest rates, one, where if like a percent like um decimals.
Yeah.
Now they're in whole numbers. So we like magnitudes bigger this year. So that drove it uh there too. Um I can probably, I'd rather be more accurate to give you like what's sitting in our treasury in a given time, uh because money's in and out all the time. We get our allocation dispersments from the state across every month of the year. So we don't get our entire budget amount in the treasury all at one time. That would be great. It'd be a lot more interest, but that's not how it's given to us. Uh it's just that we have that anomalous here where we had two big sources of cash that got to be in the bank all at the same time and sit there untouched to earn that interest. Um but I can give you, and in fact, if you, you'd like, we could do like a monthly update in the Friday update.
Just curious, I mean, just because, I mean, even with the uh reserve amount, you know. So is, I mean, is that, you know, right now it's fifty eight million. Is that all sitting there or no? Earning interest or no? Or is there?
Well, we haven't, well, some of the, because the revenue we're showing on there is what our total revenue would be for the year, but we get that in
That's what I mean.
In installments throughout the year.
I, I don't need a monthly update.
So it's not all in there right now at this time because of that getting paid every month uh from the state, the dispersments that make that up. So what's that, once we get those, it goes to the bank, but then we're also paying payroll. And so where we could, our cash flows would be illustrative of what the movement of.
I was just gonna say that. The cash flows that are included in the budget book are, are accurate reflection of what we project is gonna be in the, in the treasury. Um obviously, December is an early month. That's typically when we have the lowest point in the treasury.
Yeah, I was curious.
Then Michelle, did you have anything to add? I saw. Yeah. Okay, right. It'll be at interim, right?
No, I was just more than curious. I was just curious more than anything like, you know, is that fifty eight million sitting there earning interest or no? By the end of the year, there's fifty eight million there.
Well, we've spent most of it on payroll before we get to the end of the year.
Okay.
Most of our revenues.
Mm-hmm.
Right? They were showing there that the leftover money eventually will end up accumulating that over the years. Those that, that ending balances what we haven't spent.
Right.
But the bulk of our revenues are not sitting in the treasury in a given time.
Okay, okay. And then for the Mackenzie um Scott um financial presentation, is that gonna have a component of it, what the thought is of how to use it? Or just the financial options we have for it?
Well, I think first, this is gonna be strictly on the financial options and showing like what the actual yield of interest revenue that we can get. I don't want to speak too much ahead of it, kind of aware of a little bit uh of, of what's possible. Uh but definitely looking at a way for it to generate revenue for us that we can budget towards a stable amount of money that we can budget towards, you know, on an annual basis. And then I think after we know that, just like with our budget, we know what monies we're getting from the state, then we go to work on what can we do? Right? What's the, what's the impact that we can make in our, in our community with the money we have available? So once we know what that is and we get the uh board's approval to do, if, to do that investment or to go back and look for something else, but if we approve whatever invested may be, that revenue that it generates, the next conversation would be, what do we do with that revenue?
Well, and are you asking for that approval at the next meeting at that presentation?
For the investment uh itself, not for what we're doing with it at this point. But Dr. Abara, if you want.
Yeah, it'll be a direction of here are the possible options to support, want to think about it or start giving us more direction, because we'll have our financial advisor will kind of get into the details of all of that.
Because I think it would also be helpful to know which, what we're trying to do with it and what.
Yeah, and we'll include a conversation about that, so we can start thinking about those options.
Because if one option is invest it all and use the, you know, the interest to pay for a program or invest some of it and use, you know, kind of a split thing. I think it'd be, you know, they're almost hand in hand.
Right, and there, there'll be different iterations of that.
Right, okay, perfect. That, that's.
That's a great point. What we're gonna do with it, if we need to spend sixteen million all at once, or whatever we, the board would like to do, then obviously we wouldn't be investing it. So yeah. Having some of those, what we're gonna do with it would be part of the calculation for you guys then.
Okay.
Good decision on what to.
And then did we lose any funds that we didn't spend that should have been spent by a certain time or we spent every?
We have that uh exceeded any expiration dates on money. That's part of the closing the books process too, I'll tell you, and, and not even throughout the year. Is that we're constantly looking at what's the most, like what's the next money up to expire essentially? And then, and sometimes we'll have planned expenses in one bucket of money that we move over here to where something that's gonna expire soon, so that we're never losing our spending ability essentially, our spending power. And that's something our fiscal department keeps an eye on constantly. I know Kathy's in, involved in that heavily as well and the work that she does over there in supporting the budgetary work and its services uh as well as all of the other departments. But we're, we're keep a close eye on what monies we have and when it expires and, and, and we're not going to let ourselves lose any money uh because of uh missing the boat on an expiration date.
Excellent. That was all my questions. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, this is an action item. So I'll entertain a motion. Move to approve the twenty two, twenty three on that audited actuals financial statements. A second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Item N two.
She stayed up there. So this is the other item of, of uh re-adopting uh the updated S R three plan as presented and also it's included there in detail.
Any questions?
I move approval.
All second. With a motion in a second, all in favor. Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Item N three, H R memorandum of understanding.
And item E, uh N three, um that's the M O U that we entered into with triple E A in regards to differential rates for our certificated employees. And just to give a little background on this one, back in June twenty second, when we voted on the uh new permanent rates. Um it in essence um made the differential rate according to Ed Code four, four, nine, seven, seven uh our true costs. Which then uh resulted in a burden upon our certificate employees. Um we negotiated the effects with triple E A and the resulting negotiation was to lower the differential rate then to a hundred and forty dollars per day, not to exceed fifty percent of the employee's daily rate. And then keeping our psychologist and speech pass the same at forty five dollars per hour.
Questions? If not, uh I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the triple E A memorandum relating to the differential rates, so assembly bill, eighty, twelve hundred, government code, thirty five, forty seven, point five.
Second. We have a motion in a second, all in favor. Let it be known, passes four to zero. Item N four, superintendent office superintendent contract extension. All entertain a motion. We're all there. Move approval.
All second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor. Motion passes four to zero. Congratulations, Dr. Abara. Moving on to item, uh board member and board president reports. Ms. Harper, any comments?
Yes, always. Thank you.
Of course.
Um I attended both insurance committee meetings. Um and just wanted to say that o-open enrollment is gonna be in November and then the rates went up significantly. The United Plan went up seven percent and Kaiser went up over eleven and a half percent. Um so the rate sheets will go out in mid-October. And then November first through ninth is the open enrollment. Um but then one of the nice things that the benefits department has done is partnered, I think with American Fidelity. Right? And uh so there'll be a, an online portal for registering for benefits, which um a lot of big companies, I know my company does it. It's really nice and they're they can help you with any questions and, but then you can see it all and it's, it's really nice. And then hopefully take the burden off the benefits department and processing all of that. So um and then I, I attended the um triple E A meeting today, which is always informative and uh I, we like uh being able to meet with them, which is, I think I've been trying to encourage the high school district to do the same thing and they don't. So, but I've, you know, we just have good relationships. So I appreciate it.
Don't and won't. Um. And so I was able on my drives to and from work each day to observe the opening of schools. I've talked with a number of teachers who are just describing a really smooth opening to the school year and I just, I'm so appreciative of that. Uh students appear to be focused, I, the majority of students, obviously, you know, some will have trouble coming back, but there just seems to be a, a new and positive feel about many, many of the campuses, hopefully most of the campuses. And so just very appreciative of everybody that's making that possible. I also attended the council P T A meeting um and was able to see a huge turnout, huge turnout. I think every school represented. Um and so that was just really, really outstanding. And to hear the really good things that all of those P T As are doing, um really excellent. Again, thank you to triple E A. I, I think that our meeting with both C S E A and triple E A on a regular basis just really leads to a much more clear understanding of concerns and interests. And I think it's very positive. And we need to make sure to continue it because the option is not good. So thank you, uh thank you all to, to those groups.
Ms. Houston?
No report, just, I just wanted to thank the teachers, the Mr. Um great, thank you for all the work you've done. And I can't see you right now, but um. You, you will surely be missed, but I wanted to thank you for all the years of dedication and everything that you've done. And additionally, assisting with the um, the union also representative. Um so thank you so much for all the work you've done and um you will be missed. Uh but other than that, also I wanted to thank the cabinet for all the work they did on that presentation. I know that that was very uh time consuming and thank you so much. And I think that we're moving in the right direction. Um unfortunately, I think it's gonna be a slow process. But that is something that uh we will overcome. So I would thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'll just echo what my colleagues have mentioned. Uh I've had a chance to talk to uh more teachers in the beginning of the year than I normally do and they've all expressed, it's been positive. Um it's been a smoother, smoother path and I'm looking forward to uh it just getting smoother as we uh go throughout the school year. Again, thank you to the cabinet for all that work and it was a lot of information. Uh and uh a lot of stuff for us to digest, but uh with the informations, how we, we go in the right direction. So thank you. Dr. Abara.
Um yes, I had the opportunity, opportunity to attend the saluted teachers where we, where I got to honor uh Carrie McGibney, our middle school teacher of the year. And Wendy Three, our elementary um teacher of the year. Um it is a different format. Then it's been done in the past. Usually it was over at the Balboa Theater. Now it's just very limited seating. Pretty much, I think all the honorees get to pick one person and then I get to pick one person. Um not even our principals were able to attend. So I'm hoping they change that. But we did get some great news, um because at the event, Wendy Three was named one of the five county teachers of the year. So congratulations to Wendy Three. Very well deserved. And um thank you to the board for the uh confidence and um with my contract extension, really appreciate that. And thanks to all the teachers and classified employees for our um road ahead. I mean, there's a lot of work to do and it's gonna take all of us, really uh uh both classified and certificate, all of us working together um to making this uh possible. So and again, to all our administrators and the cabinet for um just keeping everything moving. So thank you, everyone.
We wish you more cabinet. Information's very good. So our next scheduled, regularly scheduled board meeting will be held on Thursday, September twenty first here at the Carolyn Gilbert Educational Center. Uh and with that, we will not be going back to closed session. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Do you have the script?